Sorry about that feedback. It is 5:00 PM. Let's begin the Policy Committee meeting of February 6, 2023. Yeah, I guess we do have the Pledge of Allegiance for this, too? Stand for the pledge. Oh, yeah, sorry. Well, we're standing. Let's stand. Do the pledge first.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Lisa Glidden is here. Pam Dowd.
Here.
Heidi Sweeney.
Here.
Okay. I won't wear that new pen. Okay, so we have the first policy to be reviewed, School Safety Plan 5681. Amanda?
Good evening. So, the primary changes to -- recommended changes to the school safety plan focus on two items. One, that districts are now required to consider language that -- or are now required to consider use of panic alarms in school systems. And the other updated language that we are required to incorporate for the 23-24 school year is language regarding remote instruction, making sure that we are prepared in the event that we need to, again, implement remote instruction. That new language is incorporated in the draft paragraphs in our blue language referring to state disaster emergency, et cetera. An asterisk that's for our consideration is at the end of the first page where it reads that "at the discretion of the Board, a student may be allowed to participate in the district-wide safety team." So that's an item that we should discuss. But other than that, those are the primary changes.
And just in terms of the safety plans, we really haven't had children really as a part of that because, you know, you're talking about buildings and routes and, you know, different security plans or whatever else have you. So if that information kind of gets out there, it could cause real challenges. So we really didn't add that into the plan here, and we haven't really had a student sit on the plan in that way, on the team in that way, basically.
So did you want to strike that?
That yellow bit down there at the bottom?
Well, this line right here, did you want to just strike that part? Or leave it at the discretion of the Board? Is that the language you selected?
I would say at the discretion of the Board.
Yeah, well, I think it makes sense to just leave it to "a student may be allowed" instead of "a student should or must or will." Is there any -- are there any other questions about the school safety plans? Okay. Thanks, Amanda. Okay, the next one we have up is 6121, Sexual Harassment in the Workplace.
Yes, I have this one. The change is basically has to do with an amendment from the executive law, Section 295. And it talks about, it adds the number for hotline, 1-800-HARASS-3. So it really just puts on page three, it gives that language, excuse me, not page three, on page nine, it gives a paragraph that states that information. And that was the main change for this particular policy.
Okay, are there any questions about sexual harassment in the workplace policy? Discussion? Okay. Thank you, Bob, although I think you might have this one, too. Probation and tenure.
I have the next one, yeah. I'm still up. Yeah, probation and tenure. So this has to do with this, the language of the last two years, 2021 to 21, and 2021-22 school years, where the AP PR has, there's an exemption piece to that. So what this language is saying in the very first page of this, under probation and tenure, it just basically talks about that we will comply with what the state has recommends, and we will make changes accordingly moving forward. So even though this year it's still, we're still in the same process, it could change, and this is basically stating that we will change with the recommendations from the state with regards to tenure law. That's it.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions about probation and tenure? Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thanks, yep.
Okay, our next up, Lisa, I think you have this one, Corporal Punishment and Emergency Interventions.
I do. Good evening. This policy really is a shift of language based on Ed Law 4402. The language is shifted now to include same-day notification of parents or persons in parental relations of any emergency intervention, so physical interventions should they be needed as a last resort to make sure that a child is safe. And it also further states that if, when a parent is not able to be reached, that the principal is responsible for documenting those attempts to reach the parent, and if appropriate or applicable, if the student is a student with a disability, notifying the CSE chairperson as well.
Okay, and so just to clarify for this, our policy is that we do not allow corporal punishment in the district? This is really more about changes to the emergency interventions. So are there any questions or comments, just for people who are not looking at it? Do what I did when you see the title. Okay, thank you, Lisa. Okay, Concussion Management. Amanda?
Yep, that's me. So the updates to the concussion management protocols really revolve around two sort of areas. One are the return-to-school activities and protocols for students who have suffered or believe to have suffered a concussion, and then language around training for staff and individuals in districts so that they are aware of their responses and the signs and symptoms of concussions.
This policy also makes clear that the district's medical director has the final authority to clear students to participate in or to return to extracurricular, you know, extracurricular athletic specifically activities as well. Sometimes folks have a hard time with that, but really, the medical director for the district does have the final authority.
Okay, any questions or discussion? I think, I mean, this all made a lot of sense to me. The only thing that I'm just curious that it doesn't really mention is about students' instruction when they're home, like, or if they've had a concussion, that, you know, like, you're not, I think, supposed to be on electronic devices after you've had a concussion, and so just to make, I don't know what our district, beyond this, like, I'm sure it's the teachers or your office that's going to be making the call on that, but...
So basically, we wait to hear from the doctors, what is and what isn't. Our medical doctor looks at that information as well, and we kind of just go according with that information. So if they are not able to handle, for example, like you said, electronic, you know, instruction, you know, we always have the option of providing the instruction in person, right, wherever we possibly can. So we would have to try to make allowances, and we would do that for students that need that in-person instruction if they have a concussion and need to be out of school.
Okay, great. Any question, any other comments or questions about concussion management? Okay. 7530, Child Abuse and Treatment.
Good evening, and I do have that one. And this one is being revised due to an amendment to the Labor Law, Section 740. It really has to do with some language change in the policy, and there is a change in the term of retaliatory personnel action to retaliatory action. What also is occurring in this policy is the removal of the definition of the term retaliatory action. So that's really all the changes and updates for this policy.
Thank you, Karen. So are there any questions or discussion? Okay. Thank you. Bless you. I think you're up. Use of Time Out Rooms.
Yes. This is similar to the previous policy, the addition of language to notify a parent or person in parental relations the same day if a child is placed in a time-out room. Generally, we do not have time-out rooms. We don't use them in our district, but we do have a policy for them just to be compliant with state education requirements. Language also clarifies here, similar to the previous policy I spoke on, that once reasonable steps are made to notify a parent, the principal is responsible for documenting those, and if applicable, notifying the CSE as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion about this policy?
Where it says, "district will establish," and list specific training, is that already in there? I don't see anything under that for the new language.
Yeah, we currently have a policy on time-out rooms, but we do have Crisis Prevention Intervention, CPI, as well as Therapeutic Crisis Intervention for schools, where in the midst of a shift between one model to the other. One model is a little more focused on de-escalation strategies and really working through with kiddos, so that would be in there.
So you're asking, hey, do we want to list in here the specific trainings that we provide? Because that number two has the asterisk, is that what you're talking about?
Right, there's a couple asterisks. So I didn't know if you were just striking those areas, or if you are actually going to list and establish, because we don't typically use time-out rooms, so I didn't know if you were just going to remove that.
Right, we don't. I agree. The thing is that we do send some students to, well, we may, I should say, end up with students who have to be sent to a program that has a time-out room. And if they, if we have to do that, then certainly we would expect for them to share with us whatever their trainings are. It would be difficult to list specific trainings, maybe the types of trainings we may want to put, like, trainings that are focused on...
Or that if we had a student who were, like, you could frame it like that, if you have a student who's going to attend something, we would seek out. So I think you could probably add something kind of generic and encompassing.
I agree. Maybe, yeah, maybe we can play with some language.
Play with some language.
And say, hey, you know, we would expect training on, you know, therapeutic crisis intervention prevention, you know, if there are restraints, you know, well, that's a part of TCI training. But we could certainly list some general language there, and maybe what we could do is we can include that in the first reading information, and then if okay with you all, you know, we can share it with the Board, or we'll put it in the first reading, and then if the Board says yes, then we're okay with that. If not, we can change that and come back as a committee. Yes. Agree.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, so last up, we have 3430. Amanda, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion in the District.
Yes, so the, this is new sample policy language that is the result of work from the Board of Regents and State Ed Department in the spring of 2021, both the release of the draft DEI, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusivity Framework, as well as the release of a policy statement from the Board of Regents on diversity, equity, and inclusivity in our schools. And essentially, it's the expectation of the Board of Regents that all districts will develop, implement policies and practices that advance diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools, including components of governance, teaching and learning, family and community, workforce diversity, diverse schools and learning opportunities, and student supports, discipline, and wellness. So I know, Lisa, that you had offered some, up some feedback on the sample language. I don't know if you want to talk about that here, or...
I can't, I mean, so some of it is, I just wanted to make sure that I was reading it correctly. And so some of it is grammatical, and some of it is actual...
Yes.
What this is and how it will function. So on the grammatical, like, the very first one, for example, it says, "it is just one component of the district's overall commitment." Does it refer to this policy? I mean, because the previous sentence talks about governance, teaching and learning, family and community engagement, workforce diversity, diverse schools and learning opportunities, student supports, discipline, and wellness. And then the next session, sentence starts "it." So I'm assuming it refers to this policy.
Yes, the two sentences in the first two paragraphs deal with this policy.
Okay, so it's this policy, okay. And just to clarify, then, we don't, we do not yet have a DEI district coordinator or committee? So this would be potentially establishing the coordinator?
We have, we have a person that we have put in charge of DEI, so you can call that person the coordinator, and that is Amanda, basically. We do have a committee of people who are now meeting with Amanda as well.
Yes.
You want to share some of the who's makes up that committee right now, as of now? Which this is an evolving piece.
Yes, so we have developed a DEI committee that's new to the district this year. At this point, it is, our representatives are all faculty members from across the district. We don't yet have student or parent or board participation, but we do have broad representation from across the district in terms of, we have special educators, behavior specialists, we have one of our E&amp;L teachers, we have teachers from both the elementary level, the middle school level, the high school level. We have administrators from the elementary level, the middle school level, the high school level, and representing the district office. We are working on sort of developing what our plan is moving forward, but our first course of action is going to be really gathering data from our student body to provide that committee with direction moving forward, developing a DEI plan for the district.
Earlier in the year, we did, we kicked off the year with several, you know, workshops, and we have also done some surveying of staff to kind of feel, get a feeling of where they're at in terms of DEI. So there's still work to be done. We need to have some additional folks, stakeholders to join that DEI committee, but that's where we're at as of right now. We're really at the beginning steps, and the policy is also a good beginning step for us to start to work on as well as the district.
So on page, on page three, where you designate who the coordinator is, did you add underneath the yellow, is that the new language that you added to customize?
Page three?
On page three, so we didn't add any language. It's the sample, this is the sample language from Erie One Boses.
So are you going to add...
So are we going to put Amanda's name in there?
Or title, or whatever the contact information is?
Yes, we can put that in there.
Well, and I wasn't sure how much of, I mean, I realize it's the Board of Education's responsibility to pass policies, but I wasn't sure if we wanted to have the committee weigh in on this policy before we, before we pass it. I don't know if that's putting the cart before the horse, or...
We can. So this, you know, this policy does a number of things. It looks at teaching and learning, family and community engagement, workforce development. There's a lot of different items on it. We certainly can share this information with the committee and get their feedback on it, and then bring it back to the Board. So in, I know a recent Board meeting, there was questions about our DEI policy, so we thought we'd at least, we didn't have one, so we thought we'd get the one that's most available through Erie One and bring it to this committee to at least start some conversations. We didn't, we didn't know or really kind of have in our mind that we would solidify this policy tonight because there's so much in it. So we can certainly vet it and share it with others, and come back and share with the Board as well if you'd like.
Yeah, so this one won't come tomorrow, or whenever we're going to have the first reading?
Correct.
Good, okay, sounds good.
So the DEI committee is actually meeting next Monday afternoon. The agenda hadn't initially had room for policy review, but we could do that. We, our goal with our upcoming meeting is to actually review the student surveys that were going to be in a string, but I could add this to the agenda if you'd like us to do that.
Okay. And then, I don't know if we wanted to go through some of the other...
Sure.
Like, I mean, I'm happy to, if people had questions about what I had...
Sure.
Put in, but so under, I guess on the first page, under B, for defining diversity, equity, and inclusion, it talks about equity as like, sort of a group at the end, so it says, like, full participation of all groups, but I, I think that's actually something that should be for all students, right? Because I think that that is actually at the individual level.
Right.
And then, under governance, when we do pass this policy, and I think actually we should put in a minimum number of meetings, although it sounds like, since it's already in the works, like, sometimes when you start something from scratch, it's like, if you don't tell people how often to meet, like, it shouldn't just be like a, whatever, once a year, or once every three years, who knows? Because it's not in the bylaws, so we would, or in the policy. And, yeah, I put in some other things, so the purpose of the DEI committee, it talked about creating and implementing plans, and I, it sounds like you're doing a student survey, which we'll get to. I suggested, like, defining barriers.
Yes.
And, you know, so basically, what are the ways that they'll get the information to come to them? And then, under Teaching and Learning, A, number three, talks about developing students' abilities to connect across lines of difference. So I just want to make sure that we're not, like, accepting that those lines of difference are, like, concrete, real, you know, in reality, you know, that I think we should recognize that, like, they should also analyze the arbitrariness of those lines. So very briefly, I don't know if anyone has ever watched the documentary called Class... It was about the second-grade teacher in Iowa who, the day after Martin Luther King Jr. died, she was trying to convey to her students in second grade in Iowa what it's like to be the subject of discrimination when there was very little diversity in their school. And so she set up, I mean, completely, we would never be able to do this today, but she set up an experiment in her room where she divided her kids to blue eyes and brown eyes, and then kind of laid out a class apart, maybe?
She was the big one on Oprah, and she did the, yes.
Oh, was she? Okay, yeah, I mean, so it was, and it's, just showed how quickly, like, so we tend to differentiate race based on skin color, but it's one attribute, there could be a lot of others, so just like the arbitrariness of those lines of difference. Under BD, Encouraging Academic Discussions, and I, I don't, I'm hesitant to weigh in on the content of academic discussions in the classroom, but I just want to make sure that if there are academic discussions about racism and bigotry, that it's, that there's at least a recognition of some kind of, like, systemic or structural racism, so it's not just like, you know, your racist uncle can change his opinion and everyone will be happy, right? Like, racism will go away, right? So just like, looking at those different levels. For workforce diversity, under A, I had a recommendation to talk about preparing students for citizenship in an increasingly global society. Diverse schools and learning opportunities, so one of the reasons why we are asking for this policy has to do with class trips and extracurricular activities. So I don't, I think maybe you were saying this when I came in, like, I don't know that this policy should be where those rules are laid out, but I think we should recognize that learning happens inside and outside the classroom, which is why we would be interested in making sure that students can have the opportunity to learn in a number of places. And I would recommend to strike A from this. I don't think it makes sense, I don't know what the district could do to create, take creative steps to enhance the level of socioeconomic and racial diversity within district schools.
I think, I think that statement there is probably, you know, Erie One covers a whole variety of schools. And so, you know, some of the larger urban districts, you know, there are separated...
Syracuse is like the most segregated school district in the country, yeah.
Which pertains to that.
Right.
Where it really doesn't pertain to that.
So we can certainly take a look at that, that statement there. I'm not sure that that really goes with us. However, I do think that maybe we can do some revision around making sure that we take creative steps to enhance the level of opportunity for all students in the district. It doesn't matter what your socioeconomic status is, or where you live in the district, you have an opportunity to participate in every activity that is offered, access to all activities. So we can certainly revise that, this statement, okay?
Yeah, well, and that would actually get at what I was recommending for D, so that might actually be a good replacement instead. So those are my comments on that. Are there other comments or discussion for this?
I think I, you know, I agree with most of what you suggested. I think sometimes we just have to be cautious because Erie One goes through a legal vetting, they make sure that it meets the standard of what we would want it to say, and not, not have us get into an area that then becomes problematic in the future. So just like, I like taking that, A, under diverse schools, and what Matha said, the idea that, let's say we were to find that two of our elementary buildings became further and further apart socio-economically, and one school was 90% free and reduced lunch, and one school was 10% free and reduced lunch, we would, we would want to know that, and we would want to examine it. So I think rewording that to say, like, access to all opportunities, you know, is a good, happy medium there. And I think when you came in, I was mentioning that regulations go along with Board policies. So you can have information in your regulations that might outline the more specific aspects of the Board policy. So sometimes Board policies might seem overly vague or overly generic, but if it references, like, a form that has to be submitted or a process you have to follow, then the district develops that regulation for a club advisor to know about, or a group to follow. So that's what Diane and I were talking about when you came in.
Erie One Boses also does recommend keeping the language in the policy at a higher level, and then developing for the district more of a DEI procedurals document or manual in how we're going to effectively implement the policy, getting down more to the granular level. So that's also a place where we can be more specific about field trips and making sure that students qualify for field trips or other activities within the district.
Where it really doesn't pertain to that.
Yeah.
So, we can certainly take a look at that, that statement there. I'm not sure that that really goes with us. However, I do think that maybe we can do some revision around making sure that we take creative steps to enhance the level of opportunity for all students in the district. It doesn't matter...
Right.
What your socioeconomic status is, or where you live in the district, you have an opportunity to participate in every activity that is offered, access to all activities. So, we can certainly revise that, that statement, okay?
Well, and that would actually get at what I was recommending for D, so that might actually be a good replacement instead. So, those are my comments on that. Are there other comments or discussion for this?
I think I, you know, I agree with most of what you suggested. I think sometimes we just have to be cautious because Erie One goes through a legal vetting. They make sure that it meets the standard of what we would want it to say, and not, not have us get into an area that then becomes problematic in the future. So, just like, I like taking that A under diverse schools and what Mathis said, the idea that, let's say we were to find that two of our elementary buildings became further and further apart socio-economically, and one school was 90% free and reduced lunch, and one school was 10% free and reduced lunch. We would, we would want to know that, and we would want to examine it. So, I think rewording that to say, like, access to all opportunities, you know, is a good, happy medium there. And I think when you came in, I was mentioning that regulations go along with Board policies. So, you can have information in your regulations that might outline the more specific aspects of the Board policy. So, sometimes Board policies might seem overly vague or overly generic, but if it references, like, a form that has to be submitted or a process you have to follow, then the district develops that regulation for a club advisor to know about, or a group to follow. So, that's what Diane and I were talking about when you came in.
Erie One Boses also does recommend keeping the language in the policy at a higher level, and then developing for the district more of a DEI procedurals document or manual in how we're going to effectively implement the policy, getting down more to the granular level. So, that's also a place where we can be more specific about field trips and making sure that students qualify for field trips or other activities within the district.
So, I guess what I'm hearing, make sure I got it right, so basically, we will take the suggestions that are here, we're going to put them all together, include those suggestions, and then we'll share them with the committee folks, right? And then we'll bring it back to the Board and have some, with this committee again, rather, and have some additional conversations, make sure we got everything included, and we've gotten the input, and then we can kind of go from there with the next steps. Does that make sense to everybody? Sound good? Great feedback. We appreciate it. Yeah, very good. If I can just say, this is just, this is really, this is great work, right? There are several districts who have taken the courage to start this work, this policy work, you know, policy makes a big difference. It has to do with how we govern, run the schools, and for our Board to take on this policy and to really get this moving forward, and I think students from generations to come will appreciate it. It makes, it'll make a big difference, so this is great work for everybody.
All right. Well, and thank you, Heidi. Actually, I think it was your suggestion to check with Erie One about, when we were talking about creating a policy from scratch, so that saved, I think, probably a lot of time and effort to do that. So, I believe that is the last policy we had to. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Pam.
I'll second.
Okay, it is 5:29. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Thanks, everyone.